Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is May 21st, and the first presentation is the recognition of the 2019 Employee of the First Quarter, which Councilwoman Carla Thornton will present.
Good evening, everyone. As many of you already know, the great part of working for the City of Moreno Valley is having the opportunity to work with remarkable group of people. Tonight, we will recognize the employee of the first quarter 2019 Lana Jimenez. Lana, would you please join me? Lana is a Senior Management Analyst in the Public Works Department and recognized for her exceptional performance, remarkable analytical skills, and willingness to take in added responsibilities. Lana's skillful work and dedication has resulted in many successful accomplishments for the Public Works Department. Her dedication and striking performance has positively affected many departments and, by extension, the citizens of Moreno Valley. Lana, it is my pleasure to present you with this plaque in recognition of your achievement of Employee of the Quarter for the first quarter 2019. Congratulations. Here tonight is Michael Wolf, our Public Works Director. Michael, would you care to share more about Lana's achievements?
Thank you. It's important for us to express our appreciation for our employees. I brought these up just as a show and tell. So, one of the things that Lana was able to help out in the last couple of months was put together sort of this perfect storm that occurred. We had the two-year CIP budget and the two-year operating budget. The person that did it last year, or one of the persons that did it last year, left to go to a different job. So I had asked Lana to help me out. This was my first two-year budget here at the City of Moreno Valley. And so, I had asked her to help out, and she very kindly was able to put together all of our divisions' budgets into one, coordinate with other divisions to make sure that we were submitting it. So you can see the documentation in two months, or three months, basically. This is what this person was able to work on, and I really appreciate that, and I think that it goes a long way to present this award to her.
I just want to say thank you to the Mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem, and the council members. Thank you to Michael Wolf, the Public Works Director, and Henry Noe, the Capital Projects Division Manager, for giving me the opportunity to expand my knowledge and understanding of the Public Works Department. Also, thank you to my coworkers who I work with closely on a daily basis. This really is a team effort, so I really appreciate you. And to my family, my husband, and my two children for coming out and supporting me today.
Can do the photos? Okay, sorry. I think they want some family photos. Congratulations, Ms. Jimenez. Our second presentation is a proclamation recognizing Public Works Week. Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present the proclamation to Michael Wolf.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today, we are recognizing National Public Works Week. Public Works gets a doubleheader today. And on behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank our Public Works Director and City Engineer, Michael Wolf, along with our entire Public Works Department and staff for their hard work and dedication to ensure that the City of Moreno Valley operates smoothly. And if Michael and everyone from Public Works could please come up and join me? If you can give them a round of applause, too. We have plenty of room up here. Okay, as everyone gets accommodated, our Public Works staff takes on many responsibilities to build, maintain, and support the infrastructure that helps our communities thrive. See, up here, they're trying to build, you know, trying to all fit in, trying to make sure that it works, and that's what they do on a daily basis out in our community with our roads, all of our infrastructure, to make sure that things do run smoothly. And they work tirelessly in a wide variety of tasks, from ensuring that projects within the City of Moreno Valley satisfy the highest standards of environmental care in the state of California. Public Works staff also keeps our neighborhoods beautiful by coordinating community cleanups and raising awareness about proper recycling techniques. These highly skilled and diligent folks increase the quality of life for every citizen in Moreno Valley. And for that reason, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation here to my left, which reads, "Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities; and whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works Departments is materially influenced by the community's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform and the services they provide. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim the week May 19th through May 29th, 2019, as National Public Works Week, and pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Recognized today, May 21st of 2019." If we can give another round of applause, please. And Michael, would you care to share a few words?
Again, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the Council for this proclamation. It's humbling to stand in front of these folks behind me, these men and women. I will share this, with Lana's award of the Employee of the Quarter. Public Works has had four of the last six. So you can see the dedication. It's a pleasure working with these men and women because these are the types of people I get to work with. So I just really appreciate all their efforts. This is really their proclamation, not mine, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much to our Public Works Department. If we can give them another round of applause to show appreciation. The following presentation is recognition of the 2018 Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the Fourth Quarter, and we'll have Mayor Gutierrez speak and present the certificate of recognition to Deputy Veronica Cuevas.
Have Deputy Officer Veronica Cuevas come up? Let's give her a round of applause. Well, you know, here tonight, we, you know, we do the Officer of the Quarter, and so this one is Officer of the Fourth Quarter, and it's Deputy Veronica Cuevas. So on behalf of the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley, it is my honor to recognize Deputy Veronica Cuevas as the Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the Fourth Quarter. Deputy Cuevas has been at Moreno Valley Police Department since 2012. She has worked a variety of assignments such as patrol, traffic, and investigations, and has excelled in all of her positions. Deputy Cuevas does a great job working hard on her current assignment dealing with our adult protective services and child protective services cases. She constantly has the presence of mind and remains focused on working hard and is always professional in every case. Deputy Cuevas is willing to drop whatever she is doing to handle any task requested of her and completes it with excellence. Due to her fluent Spanish-speaking ability, Deputy Cuevas has been called upon at times for translation, and she has always been very eager and open to the opportunity to help her peers. So, it is my pleasure, as Mayor, to provide you with this certificate of recognition for being named Officer of the Fourth Quarter. I'm going to ask our Acting Chief of Police, Dave LeLevere. I always have the hardest time saying his last name, but if you could say a few words?
I am honored to be able to recognize Deputy Cuevas. She does an outstanding job for us. She's a no-nonsense employee over there. She just always has her nose to the grindstone, does a fantastic job, and she definitely deserves recognition. And this is an engraved set of handcuffs for you, for Officer of the Quarter. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Officer Cuevas if you have a few words to say?
I do. Can I take my paper?
Yes, yes. Do you have family with you? If you want your family here?
Okay. Properly after. I'm sorry. Thank you. I had to write something because I will forget, and I'm also under the weather, so excuse my voice real quick. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our chief, our Acting Chief, Lieutenant LeLevere, for the kind words he provided our Community Services Unit to nominate me as the Officer of the Quarter. And you are fully aware that I am up for any challenge, especially when you placed me in front of a light press conference, knowing I had absolutely no training or experience. Thank you for the trust you had in me. I will never forget that. Thank you to the Moreno Valley Investigation Unit for taking me as part of your team without any hesitation, considering I am the only female in the unit. You have all treated me with the uppermost respect, and I appreciate that. I have learned a lot from every single one of you, which will help me in the future endeavors. I want to thank Sergeant Stan, Sergeant Favero, Lieutenant Holmes, for having such confidence in me to perform the duties I have been tasked with in the Detective Bureau. And lastly, I want to thank my family for the continuing support, especially my husband, who has helped me raise our four boys, one that is in Italy right now, serving in the armed forces while maintaining our full-time and demanding jobs. Thank you for being by my side every step of the way and for continuing your support through my law enforcement career. Thank you, everybody.
So any colleagues, family? Don't leave her hanging.
They're somewhere in here.
They're coming.
Someone told his phone down. If we see him, go ahead.
Hey, we see your forehead.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. If you want to turn down a little bit. Looks like we can see everybody. There you go. There you go, right there. See your face? There we go. We do a couple. You want to step in there, too? Step over this way a little bit. There you go. Perfect. We're good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, it's starting to fall.
Congratulations, Veronica Cuevas. Let's give her another round of applause. Last but not least is the final presentation, a recognition of the 2018 Firefighter of the Year. If we can have Chief Ahmad and Fire Apparatus Engineer Carlos Nino join me at the mic.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. This evening, I present to you Moreno Valley's Firefighter of the Year for 2018, Fire Apparatus Engineer Carlos Nino. Engineer Nino is assigned to our Towngate Fire Station 6, which is one of the busiest stations in the City of Moreno Valley, as well as in Riverside County. He has worked at this location since early 2015. Carlos started his career with Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department in 2003, but prior to serving with our agency, he was employed with the Bureau of Land Management, serving as a firefighter and a helitack firefighter on their agency helicopter. Prior to his entry in the fire service, Carlos served as a volunteer reserve firefighter here in the City of Moreno Valley. His experience gained here during those years helped him to prepare him for a career in the fire service. Since 2003, Carlos has been assigned to our agency's helitack program, previously assigned to our helitack program, served as a firefighter for the cities of Temecula, Willnamar, and the communities of Anza, Woodcrest, and West Riverside. In 2006, Carlos was promoted to the rank of firefighter 2 in the Temecula Division, and in 2013, he promoted to engineer in the city of Desert Hot Springs. Having completed his two-year commitment in Desert Hot Springs, Carlos returned back to the City of Moreno Valley. And the reason, one of the reasons I know why he came back is that he grew up in the City of Moreno Valley, having moved here in 1981. He is a graduate of Moreno Valley High School in 1992. He obtained his Associate of Science degree in fire technology from RCC in the Moreno Valley campus. Fire Apparatus Engineer Nino has a passion for training new firefighters and is an instructor with Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department's Advanced Firefighter and Truck Academies. He also provides mentorship to new firefighter 2 paramedics that are assigned to Station 6, as well as those who are assigned to the battalion. He is known for his compassion to those whom are injured or ill, has a high degree of fitness, exemplifies leadership under stressful conditions, and is extremely committed to the fire services, all attributes which are commendable. The chief officers and fire captains of Moreno Valley Fire Department evaluated all 73 of Moreno Valley's firefighters in determining who to recognize with the Firefighter of the Year award. Fire Apparatus Engineer Nino was chosen due to his exceptional effectiveness in working as a team member on Engine 6 during emergency incidents, his involvement in mentoring new firefighters, and during training throughout the battalion. He is a very hard-working firefighter and deserving of this significant honor. Tonight, Carlos is here with his family, his mom, Libia, his wife, Bellin, his four children, Rosemary, Angelica, and Carlos. Mayor and members of the City Council, I am honored to present to you Fire Apparatus Engineer Carlos Nino as the Moreno Valley Fire Services 2018 Firefighter of the Year.
Thank you, Chief Ahmad. If you would join us at the mic, please. Tonight, we honor and recognize one of Moreno Valley's finest. It is my pleasure to introduce the Firefighter of the Year 2018, Firefighter Apparatus Engineer Carlos Nino. We would like to thank you for your hard work, dedication, and years of serving the community and constituents of the City of Moreno Valley. Whether it's suppressing a fire, saving a life, or assisting the public in a general form, your commitment to the City of Moreno Valley as both a firefighter and paramedic are greatly appreciated. On behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Moreno Valley, thank you for all that you do for our community. Congratulations on making Firefighter of the Year 2018. On behalf of the City, I present you with a very nice plaque. And if you can say a few words?
Thanks, everybody. City Council, Chief Ahmad, Chief Williams, Chief Elwer, Chief Lee, and a big thank you to all my coworkers and the other firefighters who make this battalion the worst, the best battalion in the state of California. You guys are awesome. A special thanks to my family, and especially my wife, Bellin, for holding down the house all these years I've been at work and making sure the family runs properly, and those great kids are great because of her more than me. Thank you, guys.
So we're going to take some photo ops, photographs, and we're going to have with the City Council and then with the family and friends.
Well, why don't we get the family first, and then we'll come in?
And that concludes our special presentations. The City Council will reconvene in about 10 minutes.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on May 21, 2019, at 6:08 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Pastor Lupe Gonzalez from Templo de Milagros.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in saluting the greatest flag in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to read a scripture from Proverbs 29, verse 2, before we pray. And it says, "When the rushes are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked bear a rule, the people mourn." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for your love and your mercy. I pray, Lord Jesus, that your presence, of your Holy Spirit, be in this meeting, that you will lead according to your perfect will, in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor, for the invocation. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hakesnare, City Clerk.
Regina Flores, Senior Deputy City Clerk.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Jackie Melendez, Business and Workforce Development Program Manager, sitting in for Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sandsomar, Community Development Director.
David LeLevere, Acting Chief of Police.
Abdul Alamat, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Erica Green, Deputy Director, Parks and Community Services.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you. Just a friendly reminder, we do offer Spanish translation services. If anyone is interested in this feature, the devices can be checked out in the back of the room. So, at this time, we're going to do things just a little bit differently. We're going to go ahead and hear public hearing, item F5, if there's consensus, and it's the State Route 60 World Logistics Center Parkway Interchange Project. So I'll have a report from Public Works Office. Go ahead, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Council. Thank you for having this item early on. This is going to be a presentation, as it's been brought up here on the board, about the State Route 60 World Logistics Center Parkway Interchange Project. I'll cover quickly the topics for tonight. There are quite a few items in the staff report. So, the topics are going to be the locally preferred alternative. This is a discussion about the interchange itself, the configuration, the geometry associated with the environmental documents. That's the SECA NIPA documents over there. We also will talk about tonight the State Route 60 Corridor Master Plan and the gateway designations in there. And the public hearing and resolution that's attached to the staff report is associated with the extension of the declassification of Theodore Street, a portion north of the State Route 60. And then, lastly, we'll talk a little bit about the Caltrans State Route 60 signage. So currently, in our CIP, in our capital improvement plan, there are four State Route 60 interchange projects that are active, two of which are funded, the Moreno Beach Drive and the WLC Parkway are funded. We also have Redlands Boulevard and the Gilman Springs projects in our CIP, not only in our current CIPA, but in our proposed CIP that we come into council next meeting. So for the State Route 60, the status of that project, the interchange project, we are currently in what's called the PA/ED, which is the Project Approval and Environmental Document Phase. This is a Caltrans phase, since this is a Caltrans oversight project. Currently, the work associated with the PAE and ED phase is the, with DIF, DIF Interchange, Measure A, and RCT. DIF Interchange, Measure A, and RCTC's STP funding. That's what's funding the current work. And right now, we are proposed to have circulation of the environmental document for this portion of the project in the fall of this year. So the first part of the discussion is the identification of the locally preferred alternative. Caltrans' team, as long as with Public Works' team, has been working multiple months, multiple years actually, on looking at the geometry and the opportunities that are there for the interchange. And we have narrowed it down to two alternatives. Staff's recommending that we do identify locally preferred alternative in the environmental documents, and I'll go over the two that are remaining. So Alternative 2, you can see has west and eastbound loop ramps and standard configuration for the other ramps. The Alternative 6 is a variation of that, or actually an alternative of that, which eliminates the eastbound loop, but contains the westbound loop, but also introduces roundabouts. That is shown there on the diagram. So those are the two alternatives. The benefit of identifying the locally preferred alternative is as we move forward with the environmental documents, it gives opportunity for folks to comment on that. So the advantages of Alternative 6, you can see up on the board, also presented in the staff report, but basically, it's got less impact from the noise and air quality. It's actually a lower construction cost, enhances the safety, and decreases the delays. So with that, if council does identify locally preferred alternative, staff recommends Alternative Number 6. The next topic is the gateway designation. So back in 2010, the city staff and Caltrans worked together with council's approval in 2010 to identify a corridor master plan for State Route 60. In that master plan, two gateways were identified, one on the east, Gilman Springs, one on the west, Day Street. So what we're recommending tonight, because Gilman Springs interchange is not fully within the city's limits, we would recommend that we move that gateway designation to the WLC interchange. And that gateway designation, what that means, it gets a gateway treatment. So that would be the differentiation between a standard interchange and a gateway interchange. So we do recommend, if council does move forward tonight, that change that designation to the WLC interchange. Also, as outlined in the staff report, I have provided an image up on the slide. This is for the proposed street name change and the declassification of landmark status for, or the extension of the declassification of landmark status for a portion of Theodore. So last year, council did authorize the declassification and the name change for Theodore Street, south of State Route 60, to the southern limits. We're recommending extending that north of State Route 60 in the area in red, which is to Hemlock, which is about 1,200 feet. And with that, we would recommend that the Theodore name stay north of that. That allows us to work with Caltrans and provides for a very nice transition from a wayfinding standpoint in terms of the signage that are on State Route 60. So the recommendation is that council take a look at that through the public hearing process and make that determination. So our recommendations are to identify locally preferred alternative, which is Alternative 6, change the gateway location from Gilman Springs on the east to WLC interchange, conduct a public hearing, which would be for the extension of the declassification of Theodore Street, make the recommendation for the name change from Theodore to WLC for that portion only, which is State Route 60 north to proposed Hemlock. And then associate with that is the resolution that's attached to the staff report. We also are making a recommendation, in order to work, coordinate directly with Caltrans, if we can send a letter to Caltrans, basically identifying our name change and then authorizing them to move forward with their project to implement the changes on the State Route 60 for the signage, and they would do that at their cost. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. So with Alternative 6, just question Michael. We're gonna go to council questions of staff. So there would be no costs, I mean, as far as the, actually, sorry, I take it back. As far as declassifying the landmark status and just moving it up to Hemlock, the WLC street?
There would be no cost to the city to implement the sign change. Now, I take that, just, we did make the sign changes in the local streets, so, but the State Route 60, there would be no cost for the State Route 60 signage, wayfinding signs.
If we extend it to Hemlock?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Any council questions of staff? Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, I got several questions here. What did the cost, what was the cost to change those street signs recently?
I don't recall. Yeah, that was a couple thousand bucks, like $2,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. I think it was less than $2,000. It was staff time, and the actual street name signs are relatively inexpensive, so it was just staff time, basically.
So we're pretty, I mean, that's a confirmed number, a couple of thousand dollars.
I would say it's in that magnitude. If we want a specific, I can pull that number and present that to council.
Well, being a council member, I've never seen any literature on paper how much it was gonna cost, period. My question to this is, what's gonna cost the city for infrastructure to, to go north? Caltrans ain't gonna absorb this whole cost. State's not gonna say, well, put the signs up for free. Who's gonna pay for that?
Actually, with the letter that we're recommending and the discussion we've had with the design manager at Caltrans, they actually are going to, they have a project coming forward this next year, which will be changing all the signs on State Route 60. And if we get this changed tonight and provide that information to Caltrans, they'll actually do the sign for no cost for the city.
No cost. Has that been included in any paperwork to the council? Or has it been forwarded to me?
Well, it's in the staff report, tonight's staff report. And I know the last time we took the declassification, there was an identification of a potential.
Oh, so it's tonight? I haven't gotten anything previously, sent to me previously.
I'm not aware of anything, other than the staff report for tonight.
You know, I'm up here fighting all week long. All week long, I've been bombarded with phone calls, texts, emails, about this extension north. But I haven't received anything from the city. No documents, no figures, nothing. And then you expect me to sit up here and vote on this with an open mind? This doesn't make sense, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. This project from the beginning, World Logistics Center, has not even taken off yet. It's still in the court system. And we're spending all this money, I don't care if it's $50, $2,000. Nothing's been, ground hasn't been broken. And we're spending all this money, what we're basically doing is we're showcasing a development for a private developer free of charge. He's not paying for any type of advertising. We're doing it for him. It's a gift of public funds doing this. You ask me if I have any questions? I got a lot more questions. I asked my colleagues up here today, why can't we table this for a future council meeting? Let's have more study sessions. We haven't had any study sessions on this. Bring it to get it voted on? Of course it's gonna get voted on, 3-2 or 4-1. You know darn well it's gonna happen like that. Stop being, not being transparent with these residents. I've had several phone calls. What happened to our study session on this? I don't know. What do you mean you don't know? You're a council member. Well, I haven't gotten no information, and you heard it tonight. But I got it tonight, just before the council meeting. I think we should table this until a future council meeting. Then I gotta break ground within the next couple of years. Why do we keep spending public funds and free advertising for this project? We change this name, I guarantee you, you'll have other companies, and I'm not surprised they haven't approached us yet. Amazon, Deckers, Solar Paper. I can go on and on and on. Well, if you can give one developer recognition out there, free advertising, how about changing our street so we can have free advertising? Don't make sense. We're gonna create a, we're gonna open a can of worms, and we're gonna have lawsuits coming out left and right. We treat one developer special, and everybody else doesn't get special treatment. I say we table this and wait for a couple of months to see where we're gonna head out with this project from the courts. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, so we're still on council questions. Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
So just for clarification, the part where you're saying, "conduct public hearings on extension of declassification, name change, and resolution", are you saying that you wanna vote tonight to conduct public hearings on Point 3, 4, and 5? Or what would the public hearings be for?
So the code section requires certain procedures for the declassification of a landmark status, so that is the procedure to do that declassification, which would mean we would hold the public hearing tonight, and then council would deliberate in whether or not they wanna make that declassification and that name change.
But in this same meeting tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. We're gonna go to public testimony from speakers. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight for this item?
Four.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call those individuals up.
Brandon Karn, Angel Lopez, Roy Blackard, and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, council members. I oppose this item because I really think you are focusing on the wrong intersection, a wrong corridor, as your priority. I looked at the Capital Improvements Plan. It's going before the Planning Commission on Thursday, the one that they want to adopt for this coming year. I really don't understand why we need to rush and focus on a new study for Theodore Street. It is easily the least used entire road in the community. You have a huge priority on Redlands Boulevard, which has over 12 times more traffic. It has development. It serves the World Logistics Center property and the expansion of Skechers just as easily as Theodore does. And for some reason, year after year, we have not had a study on that. I attended the only town hall that you happen to have on a Wednesday, in the middle of the summer, on a weekday last year, when it was very inopportune for most residents to appear. And at that time, there was no study on Redlands Boulevard and that interchange and that expansion, which is much faster needed than this one, and a lot of other infrastructure across the whole city, which you could easily devote the funding to. I question, what is going on with Eucalyptus Avenue? You approved the expansion of Skechers last month, and Eucalyptus is supposed to be funded, I believe, at least in part or fully, between Redlands Boulevard and Theodore, using the DIF funds and other funding that's coming from Skechers and Highland Fairview. So why do you have a map and a plan that is having the city and the taxpayers fund it instead of the private development that is coming? I do believe Skechers is gonna expand next year. So why are they not paying at least a part of it? I'm also curious about other aspects, if the trail that is going down towards Lake Paris is gonna be completed as part of this, as part of the master plan of trails and the general plan, if it's going to be completed or not as part of it? I'm not exactly sure. I'm really curious in questioning your priority with Theodore Street. There is very little traffic along it. There are a number of projects and funding that you could allocate well before you do this particular corridor. People were making fun of it last year, saying it only goes to the city dump or to Hemet, and that's partially true. So why is the public funding so much of it? Last year, you had the word as a city to keep only south of the freeway, Theodore Street, but you're also going back on your word regarding that. So if you're suddenly in one map, you're saying, oh, the city is not gonna fund Eucalyptus, but in this map, it says it is. We're not gonna change the street name this year, but next year, we change your mind, because it's, oh, Highland Fairview, your largest campaign contributor. Easily over $700,000 have been donated for four members of you to be up there right now. Who's really benefiting from this? Why are they not getting their fair share of paying for the infrastructure? You could be devoting other resources that we need now for businesses and development. I don't have a problem with Skechers expanding there, that's fine with me. They need to sharing their fair share of funding. You also need to have a lot more public hearings on this item. You were supposed to have more last year when we attended the workshop that the city staff held. There had been none since. And we wanna look at all the alternatives for this road. I'm fine with it being built on three to five years.
Thank you.
Not in two years.
Next speaker, Mr. Lopez. And if the other three speakers could please be ready.
Thank you Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of the staff, and for all the folks at home watching from your comfort. And for those that couldn't make it tonight, because you're either working on your way home, or you just couldn't make it tonight. I just wanna share some history about Theodore Street and Theodore Clark. Theodore Clark was one of the city's founders, was among 40 streets given historic landmark status protection by the city in 1989. Now, Theodore was one of the original street names laid out in 1890 in name of Theodore Clark, who worked tirelessly to develop land, bring settlers to the area, create jobs, and move the city forward. So we're talking about a name change for a pioneer, for a pioneer of the city, rewriting history. Now, as far as what happened already south of the 60, you know, that's, you know, things from the past, but let's not change any more streets that gets rid of our history or rewriting history. It's not progress, it's not moving forward. It's rewriting history. And who's benefiting from it? I mean, really, the questions came up, some, you know, some feedback came up, but who's really benefiting from it? Now, as a veteran, as a federal employee, a public servant myself, as a citizen of the city, and who also served at March Air Base for two years back in the last decade, pushing troops overseas. I love this town. When I was at March Air Base for two years in the last decade, that's what attracted me to come here. Because it's a growing community, it's a growing community for business, for commerce. But at the same time, let's not make it about a single corporation. Let's not make it about benefiting one individual. And, you know, council members, I applaud you for efforts that you're doing as far as some improvements around our city, especially with potholes. However, to equate potholes to the battlefield of Afghanistan, which myself, I was a wounded warrior. I serve my country, I bled for my country, I nearly died for my country. What has set me is that I drive around Moreno Valley, and I see potholes for a year, a year and a half, two years, that still need repair. And when it comes to the battlefield, when you have one of your fellow veterans that's bleeding, you cannot put a Band-Aid to a wound that requires a tourniquet. So my request for the council this evening is, please, let's focus more on our city improvements around our streets for our residents, for those that pay their taxes every year on time, for city services that we deserve. And let's fix our roads, let's fix our highways. I don't like driving around Moreno Valley, around potholes, like I drove around minefields on the battlefield of Afghanistan. So thank you for giving me time to share my thoughts. Let's preserve Theodore Street, north of the 60, the whole street. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Much to my surprise this weekend, the Facebook keyboard warriors seemed to mention Pete and tagged me in a post. Seems to be it was about the Theodore off-ramp, and Theodore's going away, and all this stuff, all this stuff. And it mentioned how, when the last council meeting in this was discussed, how and who proposed the transition of this and preserving Theodore name. So as you read, or as you heard from the very well-stated staff report, Theodore's not going away. We're just moving it a little bit to facilitate the expedition, expediting the project of moving forward, as we should be doing with a lot of other things we will mention later. This is how you get things done. We've made a complicated mess of building infrastructure, not only in cities, counties, but the whole state of California. It takes god-awful decades to get things done. You have to start now, you have to plan it, and it drives the cost of these things through the roof. Because construction costs go up every day. Every day you delay and not do these things, it costs more and more and more. We're gonna get less infrastructure, we're gonna get less bridge building, we're gonna get less roads and everything else. One of the speakers mentioned about Redlands Boulevard or Theodore. Pete and I have asked 152,000 times, where's the extra money? Ridge Aldi, the hundred thousand, the million, or whatever it was over and above they paid to, for the Redlands Street Bridge? You wanna talk about something, let's talk about that. Because that's another one that needs to be done. Where are those fees collected? And if they are, where's the Redlands Bridge project getting done? Or are they being used? So there's a lot of things that are going on here. The favoritism or... So there's a lot of things that are going on here, the favoritism or stuff that they're talking about is all a bunch of nonsense. We gotta start dealing honestly with this stuff. We're not gonna fix it in a day, but we need to start fixing it now. I just came off a radio station, you know who it is. We talked about this, of how Chino is working on facilitating, building better housing, and more affordable housing, and cutting through some of these regulations to make these things happen. And it boils down, in the final analysis, to the kind of quality of life you want. And this is a shining example of it, all across the board, but it happens thousands and millions of times across this state, and it should not, we should start rescinding it, we should get on the stick and do these things.
Next speaker, please.
Well, we got the haters and the liars club here today, they don't got the facts, and you're leading the charge, Marcus, wow, you're amazing, huh? I mean, I'm talking about money, you and your pals that are in lawsuits, not you, but some of your pals are right now, you're laying the wrong one for another lawsuit, you know what you're, exactly what you're doing. I don't know who's texting you, or, you know, letting you know what to say and when to say it. I mean, come on, I thought you were on board and wanted the right things for the city. You wasted so much tax dollars, well, go back five years when you were involved in two recalls and everything else that tore the city down and kept us five years behind. You, how many study sessions do you want, five more? Where are you at?
Okay, stay on the item.
I'm sorry, where, where is he at? He can ask the staff, I need this, I need that, I need all these things. Anyway, we should get the ball rolling and do what we gotta do for the city. Come on, let's get into the 30, the 21st century. I mean, we gotta, we got it going right now, and hopefully we can keep it going. And I mean, all the history, I mean, history has been changed since the beginning of the time, to writing the book, come on. We don't know if all these facts are actually true. What about when the flood came in? Come on, history was changed over and over again. Come on, let's not stay in the day of Noah, let's get in here in the day of, that we need to be on, let's get going, get this train rolling. And they lie about the developer? I mean, just 'cause they say it, doesn't make it true and doesn't make it factual. They don't got their facts right about this name change? The staff's doing everything they can do to save the city money. I mean, they said it three different ways, how you could save, what we could do, how it's not gonna cost us. I, I think the staff that does the study and the hard work and looks into all the facts, that's the people I trust with this, not these two, the liars club and Marcus and his people that are texting him and telling him what to say. Come on, let's get this ball in the road. We wasted too much time already, and you know what? Redlands Bridge, it's coming, it's coming, need more revenue, it's coming, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'm gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna move to council deliberation. Okay, I'll go ahead and speak first, just wanted to say, I think we've actually, we've talked about this item in the past year, it did go to a, actually a study session, and then from there went to the Environmental Preservation Board, and then, then it went back to the city council, and we directed staff to actually change the name. Of course, it was south of the, of the freeway, and so that's already actually happened. Theodore will still be there, because all what we're actually doing is just moving it a few more feet up to Hemlock. And I believe, from what I read from the staff report and in talking to staff, one of the main reasons in doing that is by moving it to Hemlock, Caltrans is going to cover the cost. So that way, we don't have to pay anything. So I think it's a great recommendation that staff has, that way the city doesn't have to pay a cost to do the name change. And as far as, you know, people say, you know, well, why are we doing this for one company? Well, I think kind of like one speaker said, we should do it for multiple companies, and I think we do, and I think we should and continue to do it. There's a lot of cities that actually do that, that actually promote or support local businesses. Indianapolis, I believe, they helped with building an airport, so with American Airlines, their terminal, and so they, they put a lot, I mean, look at what all the cities were doing with the Amazon competition, they were trying to compete, so they came up with an incentive plan. So, again, Theodore will still be there, it's just a few more feet above the freeway, north of the freeway, so then that way, Caltrans can cover the cost. And this report was open to the public, I believe, five days, I think, you know, we issued it five days. I had the report about five days, everybody had it, the public had it, and again, the only reason why we're bringing back this item tonight, 'cause I've asked that question, you know, before, I was like, well, why are we, the only main reason why we're bringing it back is so that that way we can just extend it to the north, towards Hemlock, and then Caltrans will actually pay for it. And, and then, of course, the gateway interchange. I do recommend Alternative 6, I think that's a good one, for the interchange. Okay. I'll have Mayor Potembaca.
Thank you, Mayor, and I don't want to reiterate everything you've said, but we had the staff report, it's about a half-inch thick, and we had the weekend to read it. I've met with staff and asked questions that I had, there wasn't many, because as the mayor said, this has been discussed before, we had a study session, it went to the commission, and I don't believe that, because someone didn't read the report and doesn't know what's going on, because they didn't do their homework, that we should postpone this any further. I think that we need to get the show on the road, we gotta stop throwing mud and moving dirt. Thank you.
Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to state a couple of things. So, our city does have, there is a precedent that's already been established of renaming streets on behalf of a business. An example would be the Auto Mall Parkway by Moss Brothers, right? That's Moreno Beach Drive originally, and it got, a small part of it got changed to Auto Mall Parkway. Another thing, too, is that, you know, there is a portion, I, I've been on social media also, and reading everyone's thoughts, and received a lot of emails, and to support my colleagues here, I did sit down with staff and ask questions, this area is in my district, so I did make sure I did my due diligence concerning understanding what the impact would be, what it really means. So, all of Theodore is not, if it is passed tonight, it would not go away, there will still be a remaining portion of Theodore. And, you know, I spent five years on the Environmental and Historical Preservation Board here for our city, and so I really do value from that experience in dealing with Moreno Valley Historical Society, the history of Moreno Valley, there have been numerous, if you look through the history of Moreno Valley, there have been numerous streets that were originally named after founders that got renamed later on. But I understand and appreciate how Theodore, for many of our residents, symbolizes something. It symbolizes our history. And so things, some things that I would recommend is maybe in the future, us create some type of history area that represents the people that found the city, and also maybe our founding city council members, and the people that helped Moreno Valley get incorporated. But I do appreciate that many people are against it, but I just want you to make sure that you're informed on the reality of what this means. This is coming to the city council because it would need to be changed on the freeway, we will not be using general funds to, to make that change, it would come from the state, and also that there would be a remaining part of Theodore. But like I said, for me, being on the Historical Preservation Board, where there are so many parts of our city that were demolished, historical parts that were demolished by the city, I'm really sensitive to this particular topic. Thank you so much.
You, Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments here, so, when we first heard this item, I believe it was toward the end of last year, or the middle of last year, I did have concerns about the payment for the freeway sign itself, so for the Caltrans freeway sign. And so I was asking questions about that, and I had concerns because it was going to be a large amount of money. But, once I read the staff report for, for this council meeting, and I saw that our staff figured out a way that if we did extend WLC Parkway up to Hemlock, we would be able to save money, and Caltrans would pay the entire cost for the freeway sign. So that, that takes away that concern that I had, and I commend the staff for finding that option for us, 'cause that saves us a lot of money. Also, regarding the blade signs for the southern portion, that was a question that I asked last year, too, and it was around $2,000, I forget the exact number, but it was right in that, in that area. So it wasn't a lot of money, because we used, we had the help of our city employees. So, the, the Theodore interchange is going to be constructed one way or another, WLC or not, for the future development of our city, those interchanges, Redlands, Theodore, Gilman Springs, are eventually going to be built, they're going to be constructed. And so what we're doing right now is trying to position the city in such a way where we can go out and acquire the funding, whatever source it is, from the state, from RCTC, we're trying to position ourselves strategically, so we can be prepared. When that grant comes up, when that money is available, we can bring it in and build those interchanges. So that's what our staff is trying to do. And, so I, I definitely 100% agree with Councilmember Thornton regarding preserving the history. I think there are better ways of showcasing the history and the foundations of our city than just naming a street after someone. We can, we can look at incorporating some kind of museum or other similar facility as we move forward with the town center, or we can come up with something, so, so we can showcase the history of our city. So I definitely agree with that idea as well. If we were using general fund money, I would be very hesitant to move forward with this item, but we're not, that, that is not what we're doing. So, what we saw recently with the Moreno Beach interchange, where we were awarded a large amount of money, because we did this exact same thing, we were prepared to receive the funding. And so, it took, it took years, I think a decade or something like that, around that time, to finally get the funding. So it, it took a really long time, and now we're gonna have a beautiful interchange over on Moreno Beach where it's desperately needed. So now we're trying to do the same thing for our next interchanges. And, and so, that, that's really all I have to say, I think this is gonna be good for the future of our city, and maybe this could be a request separate from this, from the vote on this item, but I, I also think that we should look at moving the Redlands interchange forward, so we can also get ready to accept funding for that interchange, because it is heavily used, and it connects us out to Redlands, and so I think that that's something that we should move forward with as well. So that's really all I have to say on this item, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further deliberation, I'll go ahead and just entertain a motion by Council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers one and two.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mayor Potembaca. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Yeah. Okay, the motion carries for one. I entertain a motion by Council to approve staff's recommendations, number three, which is the proposed declassification, so that way we can be able to have no costs there.
So moved.
Okay, Mayor Potembaca made the motion. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, please vote. Yes, for motion three, for number three, recommendation number three. And then, this one is actually the approval of the extension. And then the next one, and then to authorize, so that way I can sign a letter to send to Caltrans, so that way they can cover the costs, I entertain a motion by Council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers four through six.
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Potem. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, please vote. Okay, and motion carries three, two. All right, we're gonna go to public hearing comments. Actually, let's just go straight to consent calendar, get that out of the way. So we'll go ahead and, we're gonna move to our joint consent calendar sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed on the consent calendar sections A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial. Does anyone have any questions on any of these?
Eight, eight.
Eight, eight, okay, any other ones? Okay, all right, now, Councilmember Marquez, you want to go ahead and start us off?
Yeah, thank you. The notification of, of residents, when there's a project being proposed, they send out letters for so many feet. In, in this case here, the one on Cottonwood and LaSalle, this development, I was informed that there was a sign up on that property. Then I got an email saying there was a sign up there. Well, unless I'm going blind, there was not a sign up there. So I took a little walk around the little neighborhood there, talked to some residents. Majority didn't even know it was going up there. But it is on record that the developer walked the area, sent out notification, the city sent out notification. Well, a lot of residents didn't know what I was talking about. There was no sign up there. Was it knocked over? If it was knocked over, it should have been on the ground. It wasn't on the ground. We had a speaker up here says, well, why can't we move it to 1,000 feet? Why can't we move it to 1,000 feet? Maybe I'll, I'll get more residents to be aware. So my question is this, we're gonna adopt this ordinance tonight for this development, but in the future, what I'd like to see is move it to 1,000 feet, and make sure the signs get up, put up on every corner, every street, so these residents driving by, they can see what the development's gonna go. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the council, in response to Councilman Marquez's question, we do have a study session scheduled, where we will, where we will talk about whether to change that, that notification distance.
We just got stuck here. All right, city clerk, any public comments on consent items?
Yes, sir, Roy Blackard.
Okay.
Evening. Item 813, the library services contract, that gives us a, let's put a little bit of history behind that. We, you know, we contracted out with library services for a long time ago, then we got, or, you know, because our library system was frankly way too expensive. We contracted that out to a private concern, voila, overnight, the library, the main library had more hours, more books, and more things going on, and everybody lived happily ever after. I bring this example up for two reasons. One of the guys is now the city manager that started that library services contract with the county way back when, and that's when we split off from the system and said, we the city could do it better ourselves, and that failed. So there's a lot of merit to contracting out to private agencies, government things that can be done. We could save a lot of money doing that. It's been brought to your attention many times, and I will bring it again, the Sandy Springs, Georgia example, and you can watch the video on the Reason Foundation website of how this works. You want more roads, you want them done faster, you want infrastructure built, you want potholes fixed. There's ways to do it. As former Assemblyman Senator of the State of California, now Congressman, Tom McClinock said many times, we do not have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. All across the board, one of the examples that was just brought up here about, you know, and we'll get, we'll, we'll address it, about the infrastructure and all that, and the costs of all that, it's all these things that government agencies do that make things more complicated, costly, and ultimately, we get, we pay three times as much for half the services. It's your job, the five of you, to put these visions... It's your job, the five of you, to put these visions, these policies in place. Just as we did with the library services and Tom Owings, when he was mayor, had the guts to pull it. And now we have another library and stuff and a brighter outlook with our library services for doing it. I say it's a shame we stopped at that point for a lot of various reasons, but I think it's time. You want a study session? Let's bring this back up and look at it and see where we can do much better with the dollars we have so everybody in Moreno Valley can have a higher quality of life.
Thank you, Roy. Okay, I'll close our public comments on consent items. Entertain a motion by Council to approve consent calendar. Motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Mayor Protembaka, please vote. Carries, motion carries for one. Go straight to item F1, which is the public hearing to continue the Moreno Valley Community Services District annual parcel taxes and charges for fiscal year 2019 and '20. Okay, we'll have a staff report by Public Works.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I'll turn it over to Candace Castle, our special districts manager. These will be several public hearings for continuation of parcel charges and taxes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Candace Castle, special districts division manager. This item is the public hearing to approve the levy of parcel charges on the 2019, '20 property tax bills for zones A, C, M, and E of the city's Community Services District. The parcel charges are a continuation of the charges currently levied on the property tax bills. They are not new. Revenue from the charges fund the city's Parks and Community Services programs, arterial street lighting, and maintenance of certain public landscape areas. Additional detail on each of these can be found in the staff report and the related attachments. This public hearing is routine in nature and required each year before the parcel charges can be levied on the next year's property tax bill. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing and then adopting the resolutions. This concludes my report on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is just a routine hearing here. So any council questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. Counsel deliberation, seeing there's none, I entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff's recommendations numbers two through six. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Cabrera, please vote. Okay, motion carries. We're going to go to item F2 on this item. Both Councilmember Marquez and I, we are going to just step out of this meeting. We do have a conflict of interest with, because we have property actually in that area. So I'll allow Mayor Protembaka, if you want to go ahead and lead the meeting.
I'll wait till they're out of your shot. Thank you. And we'll begin with a staff report.
Mayor Protem, members of the city council, this item is the public hearing for the 2019, '20 parcel charges for Zone D. There are no new charges proposed. They're just a continuation of the charges that the property owners currently pay on their property tax bills. Funding received from these charges is used to maintain certain public landscape improvements throughout the community. Additional detail can be found in the staff report. This action too is routine and is a required step before the parcels charges can be applied on next year's property tax bill. And this concludes my presentation of the report.
Thank you. Any questions from council for staff? Okay, the hearing is now opened. City clerk, do we have any other comments? No public comments? We'll close the hearing. I entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff's recommendations numbers two and three. Move by Councilman, Councilwoman Thornton.
Second.
Second by Councilman Cabrera, please vote. And it passes three, zero with two abstentions. If we can call the mayor back in. And I'm going to recuse myself from item F3 as I have a conflict because I have property in the district.
And city clerk, F2 is still showing here.
Motion passes three, two.
This.
Three, oh, two recusals.
Okay, so F3, we'll go ahead and have a report of Public Works from the, for the public hearing to continue Moreno Valley Community Services District annual parcel charges.
This item is the public hearing for the Zone S, 2019, '20 parcel charges. Like the prior two public hearings, this process is routine in nature. There are no new charges proposed to be added to next year's property tax bills. These funds are used to maintain certain public landscape improvements on Sunny Me Boulevard as detailed in the staff report. And, Mayor, this concludes my presentation of this report.
Okay, thank you. Any council questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, close the hearing. Any counsel deliberation? Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff's recommendations numbers two and three.
Move it.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Marquez, second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton, please vote. It should be four yeses and one recusal.
Yes, motion passes for.
Yes, and one recusal.
And one recusal.
Okay, all right. We'll have item F4, and this one does not have any conflicts of interest, so we'll have Mayor Protem back.
Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to introduce Steve Alvarado, our code and neighborhood services division manager, to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I'm Steve Alvarado, code and neighborhood services division manager. Tonight I bring forward public hearing for delinquent nuisance abatements completed by my division, code and neighborhood services division. In 2018, we conducted a number of 21 nuisance abatements on properties within the city of Moreno Valley after notifying all property owners and doing the due process that's in place to follow legal avenues within our ordinances. After the notification, property owners that failed to complete the nuisances, which ranged from simple weed and trash removal, of pumping of pools, of vector issues, as far as demolishing, demolishing two homes within the city that were substandard caused by fire damage. Total number of outstanding abatement charges is 17 at this time. I'm asking that we move this forward so we could place these charges on the tax roll for next year. With that, that completes my presentation. I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And again, we do this every year.
That is correct.
Council questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, close the hearing. Counsel deliberation? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that. And then I entertain a motion by Council to approve staff's recommendations numbers two through four.
So moved.
Okay, move by Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Second.
Second by Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protembaka. Okay, motion carries, five, oh. We're going to go to item F5, which is public hearing to confirm diagram and assessments for lighting maintenance district. Oh, sorry, F6. Okay, and we'll have the same report from Public Works.
It'll be me this time, Mayor. Good evening again. Though this will be the public hearing for the confirmation of the diagrams and assessment for lighting maintenance district 201401 for fiscal year 1920. This is an annual process and the last step in the process. This is for the lighting, street lighting throughout the city. The council, back in April, initiated the levy and approved the engineer's report, also established tonight as the intent to levy for the public hearing. This is the maximum implied rates for, that are in the report. So the report indicates those maximum implied rates, CPI, where previously authorized a property owner was included. So staff recommends conducting the public hearing tonight, close the public hearing, or take testimony, close the public hearing, and absent any compelling comments, adopt the resolution, confirm the diagram and assessments for fiscal year 1920, and authorize the chief financial officer to make minor adjustments as outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you, Michael. Any council questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the hearing. Public testimony?
None.
Okay, close the hearing. Any counsel deliberation on this one? Okay, seeing none. I entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff's recommendations numbers two and three.
A move.
Okay, move by Councilmember Marquez, second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Go ahead and please vote.
On item F7, I'm sorry.
Okay, on item F7, there's a, but you want to tell them?
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself as that I have a conflict because I own property in the district.
Also, Councilmember Marquez as well. Okay, so a public hearing for F7 regarding NPDS regulatory rate schedule and setting the rate schedule will have a report from Public Works.
I promise this will be the last one tonight, Mayor. So this is the NPDS parcel charge and the public hearing resolution. This is a continuation, again, of, as previously mentioned, continuation of the NPDS parcel charge for fiscal year 1920. Our standard process for charges applies to properties that approved these charges in the past. So the state requires us to have management of our discharge into the stormwater system. This is a parcel charge that covers that cost. The parcel charge has been approved by the, via ballot by property owners and prior to the levy of the county, by the county on the tax bill, it's required for the parcel charges to be approved by council. These are for fiscal year 1920 charges, and there has been an allowable CPI adjustment. So staff recommends opening the, the public hearing, taking testimony, and then closing the public hearing and absent any compelling testimony. Otherwise, approve the maximum implied charges and adopt the resolution.
Okay, any council questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the hearing. Any public testimony?
None.
Okay, close the hearing. Any counsel deliberation? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion by Council to approve staff's recommendations numbers two and three. Okay, motion by Councilmember Dr. Thornton, second by Councilmember Cabrera, please vote. And so it should, it pass three yeses, Councilmember Thornton, Councilmember Cabrera, and myself, and then two recusals. Okay, yeah, go ahead. Okay, item G1. This is approved Civic Center Park Community Demonstration Garden Project and Funding Plan. We'll have a report from Parks and Community Services District.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. Item G1 brings an opportunity to develop a community demonstration garden as part of the new Civic Center Park, which would support the Healthy Movil initiative to expand health and wellness opportunities for Moreno Valley residents. Civic Center Park, which is scheduled for construction late this year, along with the city's first outdoor amphitheater, will bring a passive recreation area. Staff wanted to add a healthy component to advance the health and wellness initiatives set forth in the Momentum Movil priorities by offering a community demonstration garden. The community demonstration garden, to be located in the rear of the Conference and Recreation Center, will demonstrate and educate the community on residential food production as well as best practices for home gardens. Elements included on the conceptual includes raised garden beds, vertical planters, seedling racks, fruit trees and trellises, and an outdoor classroom and hydroponic vegetable towers. The anticipated total project cost is $473,841. I'm sorry, $473,841. Funding is available in the development impact fees of $200,000. Staff has applied for a grant from Kaiser Permanente and will apply for the green infrastructure grant through the California Natural Resources Agency to offset the remaining balance of the project. Staff recommends council to approve the Civic Center Park Community Demonstration Garden and add the project to the city's current capital improvement plan and approve the proposed funding plan as contained in the fiscal impact section of the report. That concludes my report. I'm open to any questions you may have.
Any council questions of staff? Any pub, public comments, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, counsel deliberation? Okay, I entered, okay, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you. Just very quickly, I just want to say thank you to staff and to my colleagues as well for helping this item come before us. It's something that we've been working on for a really long time now. And Patty Solano's not here tonight. Erica Green is here in her place, but Patty, and, and if you can, please let her know next time you see her that I say thank you as well because she's been, she's played a large role in this and everyone at Parks. And, and so really want to say thank you. And I look forward to, to this because it's really the first community garden, the first city garden that we're going to have here, and, and it's another amenity for everyone to use, whether it's seniors or children, parents, it doesn't matter. It's going to be another amenity for people to come out and use. And also, we've been doing a lot of outreach to other organizations like Eastern Municipal Water District. You mentioned Kaiser that's helping, other nonprofits. I spoke with folks from UCR, from the sustainability divisions and renewable energy divisions, and they want to come out and, and partner with us. And also Valverde and Moreno Valley Unified. So really looking forward to it, and once again, just want to say thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion by Council to approve staff's recommendations number one and two. Motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Okay, and it's approved. All right, motion carries. Okay, we're going to go back to items on non-agenda items. Okay, so Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
None.
For non-agenda items? Okay, all right. Oh, there's people raising their hands, but I don't know. Okay, how many speakers? One, Louise? Two, just two speakers? Okay, all right, yeah, okay. Go ahead and call those two speakers, Madam Clerk?
Bob Palomares and Luis Palomares.
And we'll do two minutes each on these.
Good evening, council, Mayor, Mayor Protem. I was kind of here late for the Sixty World Logistics Center Parkway thing, but it's a good project. I'm glad it's moving along. And it always seems that there's something that the city's moving forward on that the majority of the council members are for or want to see it happen. Marquez seems to find a way to be against it. Now, he's talking about the money we're going to spend, which there isn't any we're going to spend from what I hear, I understand. But when the auto mall came in, the big neon sign, city paid for it. Order of a million dollars. And the only thing Marcus was for, going back to when he ran for mayor, was the gas station, car wash that they were gonna put up there on, I believe it was on the east end. But at the end, the developer pulled out. You know, the people didn't want it there. But he had escorted, accompanied the developer to planning commission meetings, got money from him, denied that he got money until it was shown to him in paper. So you know, he's, he isn't trustworthy, he's unfit. And you know, he, that's his pattern. Oh, I forgot my work, my paperwork. I don't know. He has a lot of time to find out, but that's the angle that he uses. He knew, he knows what's going on, he just picks it that way. You know, that's just the way Marcus is. He's always been that way, and he'll never change until he gets thrown out. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Roy Blackard, followed by Luis Palomares. Roy Blackard? After the other speaker, okay, there you go.
Seems to be a lot of discussion about infrastructure, and we kind of addressed that, but overall, you know, we did talk about that, or I did in the other one, but it takes, like you said, it takes forever on that, and everybody complains, well, this isn't getting done and that isn't getting done. But again, it's the, it's the terrific maze of rules and regulations that we've made to do these projects that take forty, eleven years to do. And the abs, and what amazes me is a lot of the people that complain about the infrastructure, or their roads not getting fixed or things done, are the ones that are supporting the exact rules and regulations that are preventing this from getting done. So how does that work? I mean, the hypocrisy sometimes around all this stuff is amazing. Because if we put our collective heads together and all started working in the same direction, we could all fix all this stuff very easily. Something called the homeless to work program, it's working, and our, we had the biggest reduction in homeless, just by doing a simple little thing. Not costing very much either. So just throwing money at problems sometimes makes them worse, like the homeless. Look at San Francisco, Seattle, Los Angeles. You feed them, they will come. So if you encourage that, like they do in those cities, it proliferates a problem, what, fifty thousand and growing in Los Angeles? Look at Riverside. So solving these problems is very easy. Sometimes pushing the apple cart to solve them is very difficult, and it shouldn't be. So we should work every day to start unlocking the chains that's keeping us all in the state that we're in, and make us a better community for it. I just have a point of order. Did you, was there a Nathan Alessandra agenda item, and was that polled?
Nathan Alessandra, I, yes.
And that, it was polled?
It was, um.
Was that the revision on the agenda?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, so I wasn't losing my mind, did it?
Yeah, it popped up.
Dropped out, thank you.
To a later time, yeah. Okay, we have Luis Palomares, followed by Jeanette Porter.
Well, I agree with Bob, what he just said. Anyway, I was on the way over here today on another note. Wow, I seen a lot of kids at the skate park there, he baptized it. It was amazing, it excited me. I felt like pulling over and checking it out, but I didn't have the time. So that's great. This is this council at work. I know Giva voted against that, like he voted against the Canyon Springs Philip there, along with Marcus here. Hey, this is our students, wow. Doctor, Doctor Gutierrez, you've done so much in the community for students. You have so many things going on. Also Cabrera, wow, you know, he's always involved with the youth, helping, I mean, just listening to him, he does his homework. He knows what he's talking about. He bends over backwards to make, you know, be knowledgeable about what's going on in our city. I mean, we can't ask for better. And our staff, wow. So we got the amphitheater coming. That's great. We got the, the homeless program working great. You know, we got the field over there at Canyon Springs again. I mean, so many kids are excited. They got to graduate out of that field. The skate park, it's gonna be open next Wednesday. Wow, kids are excited. I mean, these are the good things that are happening in our city, and now with this community garden, wow. It, it's, it's amazing. When people get to work and put their heads together, and all the red tape gets cut, we could do a lot, a lot. Wouldn't have all these lawsuits going on, wow, that has cut, you know, that has taken us back a lot, but hey, we're not looking to the left or the right, we're going forward. We're going with the vision of the mayor and the staff. That's what we're going, that's what we're running with. And the community is, you know, they're, they're happy about a lot of this. I talked to so many people, you know? Oh, you're that, yeah, I'm that person. Go to the council and, well, you do this, you, yeah, but why don't you go? I'm only one person. It takes a village to make things happy, happen. So, I mean, you know, we're doing amazing things here. Thank you, Carla. Wow, you're doing a lot in the, in the little time you've been here. I appreciate you. And Cabrera, what, young man, twenty-four years old?
Thank you, Louise.
Our mayor and our Pro Tem, our thank you so much.
You. Okay, we have, next speaker, Jeanette Porter.
It's Burton.
That's what it said right there. Okay, sorry about that.
Good evening, thank you. I'd like to address first the homeless issue. You know, when I'm working late at my studio, and I walk outside my door, and there's a homeless man sleeping right next door to it, that's a problem. You know, I shouldn't have to be worried about working eight or nine o'clock at night. You know, I, we've lived here twenty-five years, and I'm seeing it more and more. You know, and it's becoming an issue. And it's becoming a major issue. It's not just homeless, it's homeless people and drugs. You know, and everybody can say the homeless program is working, it's working, it's working, but I'm seeing it every day. Because we're on Sunny Me Boulevard, and there are a lot of homeless people. And when you're a business, that's a problem. You know, I don't want my clients coming in and not being safe. And that's a problem. You know, they, you have a higher, a vet program, okay? How about businesses that are veteran-owned? You know, we're one of those. You know, I invested in here because this is where I live. But you know, they're making it hard. You know, when it's thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars a month for, to lease a building, that's hard. You know, drive around, look around. You know, there are small businesses closing, and they're moving out. You know, it's becoming a major problem. You know, Mr. Marquez is the only one, you know, who we took on as a client. You know, how many of you, you know, besides Ulysses, has been to our, to our, to our establishment? You know, we've been there almost two years. You know, I dedicated my, my time and service to this country. You know, I mean, Moreno Valley, you know, I mean, come on, small businesses.
Thank you. No more speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay, we're gonna go to reports, city council reports, March Joint Powers Commission, Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I'm providing an update from the March Joint Powers Commission meeting held on May eighth. At that meeting, the commission approved the annual report for the foreign trade zone, a ground lease with Heacock Partners for the Heacock Truck Terminal, and the end-of-the-year budget amendments.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll have two reports from Councilmember Marquez. One is the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, and the other one is the Riverside Transit Agency.
Thank you, Mayor. In celebration of birthday this year, the agency hosted one hundred kindergarten students from Sunny, Sunny Meadows Elementary School in Moreno Valley for a visit to Lake Matthews Reserves. The event provided the opportunity for students to participate in hands-on learning through demonstrations about the importance of conserving natural resources. By the way, nobody knows or doesn't know about Lake Matthews. It's up in Galvin Hills. It's a very big lake, but unfortunately, it's closed to the public. It's owned by the Water District, and it's only used, that water is only used for drinking for, for the region. Even the residents that live on that lake, they can't even go out and fish out there. That, that's how, how close it is. Very strict regulations out there. The event was sponsored by the RCHCA and WRCOG staff, along with the Riverside County Department of Waste Resources and the Energy Coalition. They do this every year, and I want to thank the, the students and staff at Lake Meadows Elementary School for taking interest in this, this year. The city total collection for, for the RCHC fees from January first through April nineteenth. These funds are provided to the Riverside County Habitat Agency for conservative purposes, and this was sixty-one thousand, twenty-five dollars. And that concludes that. Second, RTA, just a reminder. Remind everyone that the RTA's Summer Youth Fair Program promotion starts June first, goes through September second. And what this consists of is certain fairs are twenty-five cents for students from grades one to twelve. So if you want to go to Disneyland, you want to go to the beach, anywhere RTA goes, it's, it's for students, it's twenty-five cents. Can't beat that. Please visit the RTA website for more information. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. We will have city managers report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Just two items tonight. First, just a reminder to the community to invite them to join us at a community workshop where they can share their ideas on how we as a city can better engage residents on issues like the environment, quality of life, and community health. The two workshops will be held on Wednesday, the twenty-second of May, tomorrow, at the Conference and Recreation Center. The first session is from three to five P M., and the second session is from six to eight P M. A second item I have is I'd like to publicly thank our first responders for answering the call of duty in response to last week's F sixteen incident. They followed response plans that have been carefully developed and painstakingly practiced over the years. And they kept everyone safe, and they worked seamlessly with their partners in the Air Force. I'd also like to publicly offer special thanks to Chief Abdul Ahmed for his stellar service as the incident commander for the entire response. We all breathed easily, much more easily, when we knew that this, the situation was in his expert hands. And so please join me in recognizing and thanking Chief Ahmed. My report.
Thank you. City attorneys report?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members, very briefly, as you know, we have successfully closed five dispensaries pursuant to court orders, and with the assistance of the police department and code enforcement, we have seven more orders, and we are in the process of executing those as we speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we will go to public comments. So we'll, I mean, not public comments, council comments. So we'll have, we'll start with Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I feel like every, I want to use all my time, every city council, talk about potholes. If you see potholes, please use the Moreno Valley app and take a picture and report them. It has to be a community effort concerning potholes. You know, we drive around, our city staff drives around, but we need your help. So someone earlier mentioned that we're not investing in the infrastructure of our city streets. Yes, we are. There's a five-year plan that we've had a city council meeting about, where we inform the public on the plan. And now it's gonna be like my little passionate, like soapbox thing, is, you know, advocating for the city. We're doing the best we can. We need more revenue to invest more in our streets, so support projects, and we'll get more revenue. I'd like to thank Chief Ahmad also. I did a ride-along with him, and we visited the Sunny Me Ranch Fire Station forty-eight and Fire Station Two, and I learned a lot about the, the response that our firefighters are engaging in, from medical to, to house fire. I think what someone burned some mac and cheese in the oven, and it was really great experience, and I'm looking forward to more engagements like that with the fire station. Also, we have a Memorial Day ceremony coming up on Monday at nine A M. And so just a note to the public, never say Happy Veterans Day to a veteran on Memorial Day. That's honoring all of the men and women who have passed in the, in the military. I don't know if anybody else has had that happen, but it's happened to me. So it's honoring the people who have died in service. So we're gonna be having our ceremony at the Veterans Memorial here in City Hall, so we want to welcome everyone to come out, and I'm sure someone else will talk about the skateboard park. Okay, I won't take that then. Thank you so much.
We have Councilmember Marquez.
Got me off guard there, okay. I just want to set the record straight. We had two speakers up here. One speaker in particular says that I took money from a developer, I escorted it to planning commission meeting. Maybe four-twenty is the question around here, maybe that's the problem. Look at your four-sixties, the Bible, our Bible, four-sixties, and see where I took money from. And then come back here and tell us if my name's on those four-sixties for contributions. On a good note, I want to say to my staff, you're doing a great job. Chief Police, fantastic job. All I get about is, when are we gonna get a new chief? Well, we do have a new chief. Well, he's not a permanent. I think he is, so let's see what happens there, chief. Fire chief, Ahmad, you're doing, you, you and your staff are doing great. Go out to a fire, and thanks for notifying me, and, and try to work with the community out there and keep in some breath on what goes on out there. I really appreciate that. And again, you know, you've called me at four o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the morning, and I've always been there, but I appreciate that, and I go see you also, chief. You can call me anytime. Staff, I turn in those, those reports, and you guys jump on them real quick. I appreciate. There's some that are lacking, but we, we can, we can work with that. But I want to say thank you to, to the staff. You're doing a great job, and I appreciate it. The question brought up to me was, do I get recognized as a veteran? A lot of people don't know that I'm a private person, but I want to clarify something. I spent two years in Vietnam. I fought for our country to have freedom. And for one of my colleagues to say that I'm not a veteran, that's a shame. That's a shame. But I want to let the public know that I am a veteran, two years in Vietnam. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everyone that this Saturday at six-thirty A M., I know it's real early, but six-thirty A M., there is a hike up to Terry Peak. We're, we're starting six-thirty on the dot, so please join us. We have, it looks like it's gonna be a good, solid group of folks that is gonna come with us. And once again, I can't stress enough how nice the view is. Once you get up to the top, it's, it's a steep hike, but it's, it's doable if you just pace yourself, and you're gonna be with a lot of other people who have experienced that trail before, so it's well worth it. You get to, you get to see some beautiful views. So Saturday, this Saturday, at six-thirty A M., right outside of La Salle Elementary on Cremaria is where we're gonna be meeting. If you can make it, please join us. I'll see you there. Also, this past weekend on Saturday, we had the youth conference again. And it was extremely successful. It was well-attended. It was the best one we've had so far. Our student mayor, Giselle Tapia, did a really nice job. It was actually her last one, unfortunately, because she's, she's termed out now of the E L C. I joked with her, like, you should come back, let's, you know, let's try to extend her terms, but my point is, it went really well. The kids had a lot of fun. I'm gonna say students. Melissa told me to stop saying kids. She said, say students. So the students, it looked like they were really engaged, and I actually want to commend Jackie Melendez from Economic Development. She was one of our speakers. I've never heard her speak like that in public, actually give a speech. I was taken aback. She did an amazing job, and how she was able to connect with everyone, like, everyone was laughing, having a good time, and, and the information that you presented too. I learned a lot from that as well. So just want to say thank you also for participating, for being a part of that. And, and I'm hoping that next year we can expect. And, and I'm hoping that next year we can expand, make a even larger event, because the room was packed. It was completely packed, and hopefully next year, we can move into a bigger facility. So, um, lastly, just wanna, just wanna say, you know, uh, up here, uh, my colleagues on, on the council, we're consistently trying to find solutions to problems that are happening here in our community, first and foremost, in our districts. Uh, but, but we collaborate with each other, and we look at, uh, I think we should continue to look at what has worked in the past. What are things that have been implemented, uh, in, in the past that, that have been successful? But also try to think outside of the box, and kinda like with the Homeless to Work Program, where we, we looked outside of the city and saw what are other places doing that are successful, we look at the data, the statistics, we look at the numbers, and then we figure out how we're gonna implement it so that it works here in our city as much as possible. So, um, I, I'll leave it at that, I just wanna say, uh, thank you for everything you're doing as well, and, uh, everyone have a good night.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Well, I think most of everything has been said, but nevertheless, I want you to know that, uh, it's very important to be there on, uh, Wednesday, May the twenty-ninth at five P M. at the skate park. Bring the kids, and if you can't bring them, send them on skateboards, but it's a great event, and this was initiated by students, and we're gonna have, uh, student speakers there, uh, the students that collected the petitions. So come out and support them, because it's, it's something that, you know, came from the community, and it became a reality with the help of the community and our great staff, and of course, with the approval of the city council. But it's something that, um, just happened because someone said, we need a skate park. We can't get to March Air Force Base, it's too late, it, at nine o'clock, they shut off the lights, there's no transportation, and they found a solution. So instead of complaining, 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 they made it happen. They said, this is what we need, and this is the solution, so, we need to follow suit. I also attended the, uh, youth conference, and, um, um, Ulysses Cabrera, our councilman, that has been very active in the, uh, Emerging Leaders Con, uh, Council, and being, um, a mentor to our members, our student mayor. I just wanna say congratulations to, to him, to Councilman Cabrera. Jackie, thank you for being there, and for offering all your, your knowledge and your motivation, great speech. And to the, um, people that were there, uh, registering people, and giving them their little tickets for the, uh, raffle. When I got here, I'm like, oh my god, you know, there's nobody here, but then I realized, when I got inside, it was full. I realized that the parents are dropping off the kids, or they're getting here on skateboards and bikes, they don't drive, it's a youth conference, so I'm like, oh, okay. But I can, I can attest to what, uh, Councilman Cabrera is saying, is that there must have been twice as many students as there was last year. So, congratulation on that success, so, don't forget, May twenty-ninth, five P M. skate park, thank you.
Thank you, and, um, I actually had the opportunity as well, uh, to attend the, uh, youth conference and show support there. And, but, I mostly came towards the end part, uh, so Jackie, I missed your, your speech, but I did hear that it, it was great. A lot of the students were, were really excited about that, so, good job. The, uh, youth conference was, uh, something that was worthwhile, you know, uh, for many students. Uh, they learned a lot of like interviewing skills, job readiness skills, so that was something that I really liked, and just how the staff organized the entire event, uh, with raffles and things like that, so, uh, Pat, I wanna say thank you to your staff, uh, for helping with that. I know that they were here on a Saturday, and they spent that whole morning, that whole day, uh, working hard, so please tell Catherine. I said, uh, thank you. I do wanna recognize, um, the, uh, officer of the quarter and the employee of the quarter. Uh, these are individuals that really work hard for our city, and that have done, uh, uh, you know, out-of-the-box thinking and, and strategies. And so, um, I just wanna say, you know, congratulations to those folks and those families. I had the opportunity last week to, uh, attend the Employment Resource Center, and I, again, I wanna thank Jackie, and you just happen to be here today. But, um, usually it's Mike Lee, but I wanna thank you for, uh, the tour. You and Mike, um, did a great job, I know, um, city manager was there as well. We were able to really see all of the software programs that, that we offer to the community for free. And these are programs that basically residents can come in and find out what their skills are, as far as like, um, interests, uh, personality tests, they can take all kinds of different things, and then see if that job really fits. So I really liked that. And we also offer trainings and classes as well, and California Baptist University, uh, which is actually a partner with us, has, uh, their satellite campus, uh, there as well, so that was really nice to see and, and everything. Um, so, uh, we've been doing a great job, you know, with the Employment Resource Center, it's really grown, uh, from the time, um, when I got on the council, and back in twenty thirteen, I took a tour around that time, and it's really, really grown a lot, uh, it's been renovated. It doesn't look like, you know, your typical DMV or anything like that, it's very modern, the chairs, the computers. So it's, it's just really, really nice. So I, um, even if you're not looking for a job, maybe you wanna just, um, get your job skills just ready. Or maybe you're looking at maybe taking a new class, uh, you can do that, we have LinkedIn licenses, and I believe we still have some licenses available, so those are licenses that, uh, you can get, uh, through our Economic Development Office. And they, basically from there, you can take, uh, online courses, uh, for free. And so we have, uh, many different courses that you can choose, uh, from, uh, using LinkedIn Learning. So I actually enrolled in two courses, and so I'm on my way, there's quizzes, and it's just great. Um, also, I wanna mention that, um, the skate park, like my colleagues mentioned, uh, is opening this Wednesday. It's actually been open for almost a month, you know, uh, under the table, I guess you could say, because there's a lot of kids that have been there. Uh, you know, even on my Facebook, I would see, um, just comments and things like that, I'm like, wait a minute, how did that, how did they, how were they there, you know, but I guess they snuck in through the gate or something, I don't know, but. Anyways, it's officially going to open, uh, next week, and so it's gonna be a really, really nice event. And, um, I know the kids and the youth, uh, they're really supportive of, of that program, and that's what we're really about, you know? This council, I gotta say, you know, our colleagues, uh, were really, uh, youth-oriented, uh, we are, uh, well, we're oriented towards helping all of our residents, but we, uh, you know, we pay special attention to our future, our future, uh, leaders or future, uh, residents, and, uh, making sure that they have access to, uh, many programs. Uh, so, um, I did, uh, wanna say that next week also, uh, for Memorial Day, I'd like to invite you, uh, to the event, I'll be, uh, presiding over that event at nine A M. And again, it's to, uh, honor, um, our fallen, uh, heroes. And with that, I would adjourn, I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-nine P M.